The purpose of the public hearing is to give everyone the opportunity to express their views and to provide evidence in support of those views. The Board is committed to conducting these meetings in a productive and efficient manner that assures that the regular agenda of the Board is completed in a reasonable period of time, honors the voluntary nature of the Board's time, and using that time efficiently. And allows for a fair and adequate opportunity for input to be considered. In order for the Board to fulfill its obligations to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation is permitted, and each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Participants wishing to address the Board should refrain from comments that are frivolous, repetitive, and/or harassing, personally directed, abusive, obop- excuse me, antagonistic, obscene, or irrelevant. So tonight, we have it on timer. You'll receive a warning at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, and then at the three-minute mark, I think, a buzzer's gonna go off and you'll be asked to stop. All right, Mr. Hollis, please.
Hi, Danielle McKay.
Welcome.
Hi. Can you ever hear my hair?
If you press the button.
Push. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. I am Danielle McKay. I have taught in Loveland for 34 years. This is my 34th year. I think I am probably the sole and probably only person in this entire district that can say they've taught in every single building in this entire district, and I have. I started here when I was 20 years old. I've taught kindergarten, first-grade art, second, third, and fourth-grade gifted ed, sixth-grade English language arts, eighth-grade English language arts, and seventh-grade English language arts currently. It's my professional life. Personally, in my mid-20s, I married Bill. We decided to raise a family. We moved here. I have four wonderful children that went to school in Loveland, Matt, Liam, John, and Emma. They went to school from pre-K through 12th grade. My husband, unfortunately, passed away of cancer when my children were in school here. Matthew, at the time, was 11. Liam, at the time, was 10. John, at the time, was 8. Emma, at the time, was 6. My two-family income immediately went to a one-family income with enough life insurance to keep my home barely. I raised children as a widow with personal sacrifices to give them the very best opportunities here in Loveland. My kids were very involved with all sorts of activities. From middle school through high school, the four children were involved combined in soccer, basketball, volleyball, football, lacrosse, wrestling, choir, vocal ensemble, chamber orchestra, and show band. Despite our personal setbacks in this Loveland school system, my children have all gone on to be academically and socially prepared for their futures. I have two employed college graduate sons, another son that's deployed in the Army serving as military police, and today is his birthday. I have a daughter in college. The thing is, my kids have gone on.
Three seconds.
They've graduated. I've remarried a wonderful man named Tim. We have six together. We still live here. I still teach here. I see the need. The kids in this community are my kids because this is a community. I will continue to sacrifice for the future generations of Loveland graduates as I did for my own because these kids of the future deserve the best chance for success. Today's learners need more money, I'm sorry, need more than they did in the past to succeed. Although Loveland has strived to keep up with buildings and facilities, they are falling short of what the future needs of students deserve and need. Thank you. Please note yes.
Thanks for being here.
Oh, yeah.
Dave Schumaker. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Just look at a single number found in the latest quality profile. The number is listed in the district's Fast Fact section. The Fast Fact is Loveland has a 95% or above consistent graduation rate over the past decade. Now, actually, it's also had below. The Loveland schools are making boasts about a consistent graduation rate of 95% over the past decade; otherwise, it wouldn't be in the quality profile. That means that the Loveland Board of Education believes a consistent 5% failure rate, the opposite of the 95, for non-awarding diplomas must meet the school's mission: preparing students for tomorrow, today. This is unacceptable and just plain wrong. Public schools were created to be society's great equalizer: educate the poor and disadvantaged so they can become good citizens and fulfill the American dream. Loveland School District has turned that mission around to provide a private-school experience at public school prices for the select 95%. Did you know that in the past decade, more than 235 other Ohio school districts graduated more of their high school-eligible seniors than Loveland did? That means every year for the past decade. That is, over the past decade, every year, more than 235 other Ohio school districts had a consistent graduation rate of over 95%. Loveland thinks that if they highly compensate their educators, Loveland has teachers get or in the top 35, I'm sorry, they're ranked the top 35th school district for teacher pay out of the total of 609 Ohio school districts. Actually, in 2019, they're down to, they're up to 25th in the whole state. So they think that if we highly compensate our teachers, as well as build Tiger Nation, which is on the development ballot, they will rise to the level of one of Ohio's premier school districts. Problem is, Loveland will never be a premier school district until it takes care of the 5% non-diploma students. Money won't fix Loveland City's school district's problem. Tiger Nation won't fix the problem. It requires a cultural shift at all levels: educators, school board, parents, and community. First thing to do, recall your proposed school letter on the November ballot. If no recall is done, then the Loveland community should vote it down. Next would be for Representatives of the community, representing all demographics of Loveland residents and registered voters, to review all aspects of Tiger Nation from the perspective of the 5%. It is time for all students, regardless of ability, economic condition, et cetera, to receive their diploma on time with a choice of pathways to graduation, including a pathway via the state minimum requirements for graduation.
We're ready for a meeting to start.
Did you get that last part?
Well done, yes.
Take it. Minimum requirements.
Almost nailed. Yes.
Ben Creeker?
Ben Creeker, welcome.
Thanks, sir. So, I, what, I'm, my wife and I have been in Ohio about six years. We've got two kids in the district, fourth grade and second grade. We run a business in Claremont County, and I gotta tell you, I had no idea about school financing process or any of these other kind of arcane and handcuffed rules that you guys had to deal with. I hadn't done a whole lot of research, hadn't learned a whole lot. All I did was a really big number on a bunch of posters, and I wasn't too keen on it. Finally, last week, I was able to make a schedule work where I could go sit at one of your roundtables, and I commend you guys for all the efforts you put into educating everybody around just understanding what options we do have available to us as we try to make Loveland the best school district possible for our kids and not just let them go to buildings that have been around since Dwight Eisenhower was in office. I gotta tell you, after this, this period of time and learning a whole lot, I was surprised to learn that unlike every other state I've lived in, you got, the school district monies don't get raises as property, as property values go up. I think it's ridiculous, but that's not for here. Currently, we're only taxed with the ninth-highest district in the, in the county, so it's not like we're, you know, tip of the scales already, especially with our residential rates so high, so hopefully the city's working on that, but that's not for here. But, you know, at the end of the day, I'm gonna trust you guys because you're selected to represent us, that the numbers kind of are what they are, and trust a verified way. What I do know is I was very pleased to hear that a lot of the utopian asks, like an indoor-practice facility for the baseball team, or the swimming pool, or a new high school, or switching the stadium around, I'm glad to hear that there was a lot of rigor and discipline that went into the process, so the stuff that did show up on the ballot wasn't everything we wanted, it's just the stuff that we thought would have the most impact. I, you know, I really believe that you guys have done a great job in answering our questions. I know I had quite a few of them. I've got a couple of finance degrees, so the numbers mean a little bit to me for sure, and I try to, you know, at least be responsible in my comments. And I'm glad my wife reminded me to go to the roundtable and learn a little bit before I formed my opinion. At this point in time, I'm really under the belief that if, if people think it's too big, too large, or too long, and they haven't done the diligence to actually understand what options we do have available to us, I think they're doing a disservice to Loveland, to the schools, and to the families that we're trying to support and grow. And I, what I also learned is that even after this levy passes, that we might not even be in the top 10 of Hamilton County, because other school districts are trying to levies pass as well. So although the percentage increase, you know, looks kind of daunting, the other options we have available to us don't, don't seem to be of appeal. Our facilities do not support best practices in teaching right now, so...
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Adam Garn.
Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for having me. My name is Adam Garn. I'm a teacher at Lakota West High School, but I do reside within the Loveland City School District. I always share a bit of personal history in order to explain why I do support this levy. In 2008, my wife and I got married and decided to buy a home. We had no children at the time. We chose to build a house in the Little Miami School District due to the relatively low cost of living. Regardless of whether or not we had children, we voted to support all levies that Little Miami put on the ballot. Three or four consecutive levies failed, and we watched as the value of our brand-new home sunk below what we still owed on our mortgage. We watched Little Miami's performance on the state report card decline. We watched neighbors and friends move out of the district. Little Miami eventually passed a levy, but many current residents there would tell you that this school still hadn't come all the way back. My wife gave birth to our first child in 2015, and while pregnant with our second child, we made the decision to move. We took many factors and locations into consideration, and we ultimately decided on Loveland. Loveland as a city and as a community has many wonderful things to offer, but the bedrock of any quality community is its schools. Our two kids, four-and-a-half years and 18 months, will be attending Loveland schools, and I'm proud of that fact. To put it bluntly, we moved here specifically for the schools. Loveland offers that rare mixture between not being a mega-sized district while still providing world-class opportunities for its students. We're all aware of the wide variety of programming available for Loveland students of all ages, the bevy of high-end colleges and universities that LHS graduates attend, and so many other wonderful things that go on in our buildings on a daily basis. Now imagine the even more amazing things that our students could achieve in buildings that facilitate, not hinder, their ability to maximize their potential. Kids are literally learning in hallways. Building roofs are essentially beyond repair. Teachers are on carts, and as a teacher myself who was on a cart for a few years, I can attest to how difficult that makes a teacher's life. Loveland already has the awesome teaching, support, and administrative staff, which, quite frankly, many schools do not. We already have the eager and motivated students of all ages, which, again, many schools do not. The missing piece is the facilities. Right now, we have an opportunity to be the envy of all other school districts, near and far, and we have the chance to do more than just provide a reasonable education. This is our moment to come together as a community and lift up future generations of Loveland graduates by providing them with the physical learning environments necessary to thrive in an ever-changing global economy. This is our community, and these are our kids. Please join me in voting yes.
Thank you.
Matt Hassard.
Mr. Asher, thanks for being here.
No problem. I live on Ridge Road, right down from the high school. I've lived here over 40 years in the school district. My parents lived here over 50 years. And whenever I think of this levy, I think of them, and how much it's gonna cost seniors to stay in their homes. $588, I believe it is, for every $100,000. I kind of wanted to get, get an idea of what people are thinking of the levy from the community, so I put a poll out there unofficial, just in the Loveland School District neighborhoods. There's just less than 500 votes so far. 14% for the levy, 80% against the levy. This is on Nextdoor. I listened to comments from people. I didn't comment for a month, just kind of watching, seeing what people were saying. But seniors shouldn't have to hustle like J-Lo to stay in their homes. This is way too much. Seniors are getting zero cost of living increases, maybe 1%, maybe 2% some years. Hamilton County, I believe, is raising their sales tax at 8% next year. The school tax, 42% increase? It's too much. My house will be almost $3,000 more a year, and that don't count my rental in Loveland. I've been in five homes in Loveland. I love Loveland. I moved. We built the house in Loveland right down from the high school. It's just too much. I think that's what everybody's saying, it's too much. My wife and I walked around the schools. The foundation looked okay. I don't know about the inside. I've been in them a little few years. Foundation's looked okay. The brick looks great. The pavement looks fine. The grass looks fine. Utilities are there. I'm thinking, why aren't we talking about additions? You know, maybe like at the, uh, the childhood center. Somebody posted, and I think on your flyer back from 2007, you guys reached over capacity? 2007, this chart says you, we had 574 people in the lovely early childhood center. The year before, we had 310. The year after, we had 363. How did we get 574 in 2007? Is that a lie? Is it a typo? What is it? I mean, we're trying to, your flyer references five, I guess, are because it passed you at 574. Just one last point. Based off the votes, you guys got 14 yes votes. 14 to me, but the school board, press the F. You failed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Martian Human.
It's a challenge. I just had surgery. Martian Human, I live in Tangwood Tribe. I too am asking the Board to pull the levy from the ballot because we don't know what we're voting on. The voters still don't know, three weeks out from the election, what are we voting on. I have asked numerous times Dr. Kraus, Dr. Haley, Art, Kathy, and nobody can give me a straight answer. They, Art said it was leftover. I, my big concern is, on the bond lev- issue, they have acquisition of land, but, and nothing that is on the school levy. Frequently asked questions, nothing in the literature references land acquisition as the bond issue. You're, nothing. And your, what is on the November ballot doesn't say what is a bond issue levy, what is a permanent improvement levy, which also has acquisition in it, and I can't get a straight answer. How can you expect people to vote on a ballot that can't be explained from administration? That is ridiculous. I was told from Art that it was leftover bond language from a previous bond, which was in 1998, which has nothing about bond, or nothing about land acquisition in it. Then Kathy said that it was, that they sought counsel and consultants to come up with this language, and it is all legal. So which is it? What do the voters believe? Do they believe Art that he doesn't know what's in it? Do we believe Kathy that it was gone to? Or do we believe the levy, all the levy information that's been disseminated by every, you know, Loveland School Board? But I am not comfortable voting on a issue when the language is not transparent. It has acquisition of land, and we were told the gravel property was from the 2004 permanent improvement levy. That's how it was gonna be paid for financing, and so it's $7.7 million plus financing interest, and that's what you're using for it. It is all over nine-lev-12 presentation, it's, so, that's said. So what land are we purchasing with this bond? So I, again, say, pull the levy. We don't know what we're voting on. It has not been explained, and you are not available for questions and answers in a public forum where everybody can hear the same thing when you are on record and legally liable for what you say then versus one-on-ones where you're not liable and you, for what you say. You cannot be held accountable for what you promised people to get a yes vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're up fast.
Thanks.
Darren Toll. Hello, Darren Toll, City Loveland resident. Congratulations, you've created a new type of no-voter. Your disingenuous communication techniques, assume outside consultant-driven, and inability to clearly articulate wants versus needs have alienated many of our past levy supporters. My family is volunteer thousand voucher community in the school, worked on the yes campaign under Dr. Marshhausen, did a 2011 3.5-mill levy. My children went to Loveland schools, played football and soccer in Loveland, now pursuing fine arts and STEM degrees. Blanket characterization of no-voters as anti-Loveland, kids, anti-art, anti-athletics, anti-STEM is inaccurate and shameful. Just to clarify, the 16.78-mill levy is one of the largest millage in Ohio histories. One of your highly paid consultants tried to discredit that fact. They provide examples of Sheffield Lake, New Albany, both replacement levies. I'd like to thank your highly paid consultant for validating our point. It's very hard to find a levy larger than Loveland's 17, or 16.78-millage increase. When the Board and administration try to distance themselves from that fact, it makes me question more. You continually make inaccurate blanket statements which stretch the 2014 levy from four to five years, when Mr. Hilliger said in March 2014 interview, unlike previous three-year levies, the 2014 levy is expected to last the school district five years. Now, your latest brochure says the 2014 levy was for three years and stretched to five years. When does it change from being misleading stigmas to outright lying? Communication tactics like that make me question more. City district has been physically conservative and cost-conscious, stretching every dollar. The only thing stretching your operating levies ask, the 2011 levy was 2.7 million. The 2014 levy asked for another 4.2 million per year. Now, the 2019 levy, you're asking for 6.1 million more. Is 2022 gonna be another 50% jump to 9 million? Your operating expense levies have risen 29% or 12 million since the last levy with lower enrollment. When you continually say that you're cutting costs, but your costs are growing at an alarming rate each year, it makes me question more. You say Loveland's cost per student is a thousand less than state average, lower than most neighboring districts. Why are you quoting 2018 actuals, not the current OD report card per student? Is it because of the fiscal year 2019 expenditure debt that you sent to Columbus to increase $6 million, or 13% since last year? When you don't use your latest actuals or the OD 2019 report card, which clearly shows Loveland is a thousand more per student average, it makes me question more. There's been a lot of talk preparing students for the 21st century at these board meetings. I'm not sure what that even means, to be honest. I know that a valuable life skill has been true since before the first century. Don't blindly trust anyone, especially those in power.
Thanks for being here.
Randy Granite.
Hi, my name is Randy Granite. I'm a 30-year-old community member, and I've lived in Loveland since I was two years old. The need for a new elementary school and the expansion of the high school, among other things, has been a need since before I graduated from Loveland in 2007. Our student population has long ago outgrown our current space. Our need for up-to-date classroom spaces that promote positive learning environments and accommodate children with any and all needs is long overdue. Having above a 30-to-1 student-teacher ratio trailers major student safety concerns and a crumbling elementary school built in 1941 is not going to keep us moving forward in the direction we want to go. I am a single mother to a six-year-old in a growing kindergarten and guardian to a 17-year-old boy who's a senior at Loveland. I own my own house in the Heights and work as a one-on-one educational assistant for a special needs student at Sigmar High School. I live on a very limited income, and I'm still willing to sacrifice to give our children the very best educational environment and opportunities available. I want to, I want to set an example for my children and the children of the community that education should be valued and have high priority. I personally know two of the Board members. Art Jarvis is a very close family friend. He is an honest, hard-working husband, father, and businessman whom I trust and respect and look up to in so many ways. The second is my mother, Michelle Pettit. She is the person who taught me about the value of education, hard work, and honesty. She was a single parent to my brother and me for most of my childhood. She truly understands what the Board is asking of everyone. That's how I know they have done their research the last few years and looked at every possible option to keep the financial burden to a minimum. My mother has to get in the game, and she would not encourage a levy that would potentially bring a great financial burden to her daughter and granddaughter. I trust that the Board has done their due diligence and has been as transparent as possible. I believe in Tiger Nation, and I believe in this levy. I implore everyone here in the community to give this levy serious consideration. I implore you to vote yes for our future Tiger Nation. No one, including myself or the Board, wants to pay more in taxes, but we can all agree that need is so great that we're willing to pay the cost.
Patty Bressel.
Thank you all for having me here. I'm a resident of Miami Trails. I'm gonna talk fast. I'll get in in three minutes. Numbers mean something to everyone, just for the record. Most residents were in the dark about this master plan and huge levy bond ask until about two months ago. The community now knows...
It's not the identity or the DNA of Loveland. The fact that it's an all-or-nothing proposition is short-sighted, it's wrong, it's insulting. $165 million, with more bells and whistles than most colleges, to prevent kids from getting a little money, it's irresponsible. My interest is in realistic planning, responsible spending of other people's money. Accountability is key. We should work with the space and real estate we own, we should build a plan around what taxpayers can afford. Let's get reasonable. Vote now.
David Kern?
Good evening, my name is David Kern. I live on Lakeview Court with my wife and our three kids, Ellie, who is a sixth grader, Graham, who's a fourth grader, and George, who's a second grader, all at Loveland. I have been a practicing attorney for 19 years, and despite what you may have read